Township of Oxford, Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Wednesday, July 14th, 2021. Will we all rise and pay respects to the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Noting of the roll.
Noted.
I know trustee Payne is going to be a few minutes late. She's on her way. Approval of the agenda.
Any changes?
I have none.
I'll make a motion to put the agenda as presented.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by trustee Dunn. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to put the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Motion by Treasurer Ferrari, supported by trustee Dunn. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Dunn?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Item number six. Public comment on items not on the agenda. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on items that are on tonight's Seeing none, we'll move on. Number seven. Presentation of the 2020 audited financial report. Raina Evans. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Raina Evans. I'm a partner with PSLZ, and it's my pleasure once again to present to you the audited financial statements of the Township Township of Oxford where your fiscal year ended, December 31st, 2020. And welcome to, trustees that may not have been here last year, in our annual honor presentation. It's nice to see everyone this evening. Just starting out with a few highlights, we have a very good report this evening. The township did receive the highest level of audit opinion possible, which is referred to as unmodified opinion, so no exceptions, disclaimers, nothing bad to report. In layman's terms, the clean audit opinion. This year, starting out with the highlights, the general fund, we added $540,000 to the fund balance in the general fund. As you know, no surprise to anyone, I mean with the shutdown for quite a while at the township, a lot of the operating expenses, because we weren't fully functioning, like many communities, you've saved on some expenditures that you've normally, and then projects that might have happened and didn't happen, so we were able to add more to the bottom line this year. But I know that in the coming year, you have lots of things on the agenda, and you'll take care of that. The property tax increase, you had about a little over 4% increase this year, and that is all taxable value increases, which the board should be very happy with, and that's very consistent with surrounding communities. Of course, the township did not raise your millages at all, you actually had a heavily rollback, so you actually, the residents paid less in millage, but taxable values went up, and that resulted in a 4% increase in the property taxes to the township. State shared revenue really remained flat this year, almost identical to the year before, which, again, we'll take that as good news. As you know, we were projecting, well, the state was projecting, up to a 50% decrease in the middle of COVID, people didn't know what was going to happen, but the state income tax and sales tax revenues came as strong to the state, so we didn't have, we were unchanged from the prior year as far as state share revenue was being distributed. Interest income, down a bit this year over the prior year. The, well, you know the story there, but the interest rates, they were down, you know, Treasurer Ferrari did a really nice job of diversifying the funds and trying to get the highest level of interest rate possible, but there just weren't the vehicles this year that they were the prior year. Just taking a look at state, we got deposit rates from the year before, I mean, they literally, you know, in February of 2020, we were at, you know, over 1%, and by July, we were at .5. All the banks took a big dip there. General fund transfers out this year included $80,000 to Safety Path, so we still had some projects going on, and an extra $112,000 that was distributed to the fire department so they could make an extra contribution to the pension plan this year. The going, moving on to other funds, the fire department, operating expenses were pretty much the same as the prior year, they kept that pretty level. Digging into that a little deeper, in 2019, the township made a bigger contribution to the pension plan, it was over $500,000 in lump sum contributions. This year, in 2020, we made about $112,000 extra. If you look at the balance there, if you take that out of the mix, your operating expenses actually went up this year in the fire department, that due to wages and health insurance, all that kind of thing. The park bond construction fund, which in 2016, you took out a $2 million bond for many park improvement projects, happy to report that all those remaining funds were used up in 2020, so that is, and put to good use. The civic center was completed this year, in 2020, and the remaining park improvement projects. The water and sewer fund, this year was $175,000 now in less tap fees from the prior year, and that is, you still have quite a bit of development going on here and activity, but it's, it did decline from the, actually, the prior two years it's been growing. So I know you're very aware of that, you're monitoring that, the funds in your water and your sewer funds, but $175,000 or less in revenue because of the drop in tap fees. The township did pay down a total of $645,000 in bond debt principal, and no new debt in this year. There was also $112,000 in the Oakland-McComb Interceptor debt principal that was paid down, that's a contract with Oakland County that the township is obligated to. Again, no new debt there, just paying down, just paying down existing debt. Moving on to the pension defined benefit fund, you actually had a net change, you had a decrease in the net pension liability on HAP report by $513,000 this year. Prior year, you had a big jump, you had a $300,000 increase in that pension liability, so happy to see it come down. Most of that, though, is, I spoke about this a year ago, was, in 2019, the investments, it's all based on what the stock market is valued at on December 31st each year, and the 2018 market culminated. So we, in the prior year, we showed a loss in your pension plan. In the 2020 audit, which is your 12/31/19 pension assets, big improvement in the market. So you showed $542,000 net investment gain, just from the investments alone, in this year. So that really helped the bottom line, and showed the decrease in the net pension liability of $513,000. Also, in the other coastal retirement healthcare liability, we refer to active old pound liability, decreases in the net liability of $137,000. Also, a positive thing that we like to see, those, the legacy costs can catch up, but you've done a really nice job of managing that, and I also feel that you have consistently been adding to the fire pension lump sum contributions when you can, and they've been significant, and it really is helping the bottom line as well. So we do have, we have assets to make net investment income as well. So with that, any questions, board members? I'm happy to answer.
Are there any questions?
Yes.
With that question paid off, can we close that one now?
Yes, you did, yes.
Done. End of 2021.
Do you need a motion?
Any other questions? Any other questions?
I move to recede and file with Chair of Township of Oxford, audited financial report, the fiscal year ended December 31st, 2020, as presented.
Okay. Motion by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by trustee Charles. Roll call, please.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Dunn?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
And trustee Charles?
Yes.
Thank you, Raina.
Thank you, and thank you.
Thanks for all your help today on the ARP funding.
Oh, my pleasure, my pleasure, and thank you, you know, to township board again for your support, and also your wonderful staff, you know, I mean, I can list everybody out, but I mean, everyone's been wonderful, especially we had new staff at the fire department, I mean, everyone was very cooperative and very helpful, so very much appreciated, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Item number eight. First reading of the sewer ordinance, 107A dot 007. Board members in front of you, in your pocket tonight, is a revision to that ordinance, and what it does is, it allows the delinquent grinder plumper bears to be put on the tax bills. We have an outstanding balance of about $13,000 that needs to be collected, and in order to do it, this ordinance has to be.
I move to set a second reading, possible adoption, proposed ordinance 107A point dot 007. Remember the chapter 62, article 1, section 62 dash 81, the Oxford Township Board of Ordinances, if considered, the Chair of Township of Oxford, Board of Trustees, August 11, 2021, regular meeting.
I'll second that. Okay, the motion is moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by trustee Dunn. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Roll call.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Dunn?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Item 8B, first reading of the water ordinance, 105B dot 009. Board members in the packet tonight, you'll see the revised water ordinance, modifying the eligibility to finance tap fees for existing homes on wells where the well fails, and they're able to connect to our municipal water system. In the past, I think maybe two people in the township may have qualified under the qualifications, and through Attorney Renshaw, we rewrote the ordinance to provide a little more eligibility to finance the tap fees.
I move to set a second reading, possible adoption, proposed ordinance 105B point 009. Remember the chapter 62, article 2, section 62 dash 41G, Oxford Township Board of Ordinances, if considered, the Chair of Township of Oxford, Board of Trustees, August 11, 2021, regular meeting.
I'll second. Moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by trustee Noel. Are there any questions?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
So would a resident have a choice? What we're saying, if there's a failure, then does tap come in for the system?
Now, if the resident that's lived there for, under the homestead, all the qualifications, they are eligible for financing the tapping of the water for an extended period, up to five years. Any other questions? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Dunn?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
We thank Water Super, clearing those matters up.
It's been a while. Second reading, item 9A, zoning ordinance amendment 67A dot 025, medical marijuana. What we've done is tried to regulate for the benefit of the medical marijuana grower and the residents, to sell medical marijuana to be grown in the I-1 and I-2 districts with the modification of this ordinance. This is the second reading. Look for a motion.
I'll move to adopt the amendment to article 2, section 2, article 3, section 5, the addition of article 5, section 35, and the addition of article 6, section 26, the Chair of Township of Oxford zoning ordinance, 67A, as presented. Thank you for having that prepared.
I'll second. Okay, moved by trustee Dunn, seconded by trustee Noel. Are there any questions, board members? Seeing none. Roll call.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
No.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Dunn?
Yes.
And trustee Charles?
Yes.
Okay, item 10. Fire department. Come on up, chat with us tonight.
Can I say something about that?
Yes, you can, trustee Dunn.
I did talk to the chief a couple of weeks ago, I remember years back when we first were getting this property, and he kept mentioning about ISO ratings, and I hope the chief would, for everybody's sake, tell them what the ISO ratings do to home insurance values. I'll just turn it over to you, chief.
Okay, the insurance services organization comes out and reviews all fire departments across the nation. They were asked out here about four years ago, did our review of the village, did our review of the township. The village across the board, the actual ratings are from 1 up to a 10, 1 being the best it could possibly be, and a 10 means basically there is no fire department. And what they mean that is because it's outside of five yards, five miles travel distance from the fire station, and or combination of credible water sources. Credible water sources could be a well that produces in excess of 250 to 300 gallons a minute, or it could be a lake or stream or pond, and then we have to have an engineer come in and actually does a 100-year study on the lake or stream or pond, and make sure that we maintain a certain water level at all times that we could possibly draft from. And what they do, they measure that against the liabilities that you have in that area, whether it's a factory, or whether it's a store, or whether it's a huge horse riding arena, or a barn, is what they measure against. It's not measured against regular residential properties, it's commercial properties. And when we came out to the review, the village is a 3, and the township is a 4, all the way up except up in section 1, which is way up in the northeast section of the township, a little bit of 2, and a little bit of 13. Total properties that are included in that area is right around 110, 120 properties that are affected by that, so basically their ISO rating is rated at a 10, which means there is no fire protection. What that means is a very extremely high insurance bill that they have to pay. Across the board going down, when we got it done 10 years ago, we lowered our rating, at that time it was an 8, we lowered it down to a 5, and a lot of the homeowners, if it's residential, your bills went down probably 100, 150, down for whole, you know, insurance. So that's why we've always looked for, trying to get property up on the north end of the township. Yes, it's a little thinner population over there, there is quite heavy industrial, but at the same time, it's that north section over there, again, you know, five mile travel distance. We were able to get the property donated to us from the Leaning Corporation, thanks to former supervisor Dunn, who spent hours and hours and hours, current supervisor Curtis was involved with it, and myself, we were around the corner, and she did get hammered out the good deal property officially to last, basically last fall, last winter. It is projected that is a place to put a future fire hall that would serve within, you know, from that location, it's right through by 24 and Benamora, to that location from there, over to the exact corner of there at Davis and Lake Road and Hempstead Road, right on the four corners of Baltimore Townships. It comes out to like 4.8 miles, and it's done by road miles, not by crow fires, by road miles, and that's the problem. So the intent is to build a fire hall and a property. Budget-wise, it's hard to swing it right now to get something started there. What it needs is a tanker truck sitting up in that, you know, truck or ambulance, a building for it to be in, site work to be developed in the site, we'd have to have a well on site that, you know, would provide water for it, maybe fill the trucks and do everything. Budgetary, it's round to do everything, to do the site, look to do a well, to put up a building, and again, I don't want to put up a shed for something and put money into it and have to turn around 10 years and all tear down after you build it, record build, I'd rather do it right from the first place. Issue is, it's going to be close to, all well and done, you look at it close to $1 million is the work to make that happen, and in order to staff it, I don't have any paid on call that live in the north end of the township, and I can't really just have a truck sitting there with nobody that's going to be able to drive it. If I staff it with full-time personnel, then I would need two people out there, which would cause with the shifts, and we'd have to hire six people. Six people would cost to be right around $900,000 a year for six people to build a gas station. So, yes, it's a perfect segue as far as how to get the station there, but again, trying to come up with the money and budget. I would like to say my long-term plan right now would be looking between 5 and 10 years to handle building out there. If there's any site work that can get done or get donated in the meantime to start balancing the property, would be something that we could, you know, we could look at that way going forward.
That's exactly what I wanted to hear, is the bottom line.
Okay, do you have any questions, trustee?
Yes, sir.
Can we put together a couple of people to sit down with the chief to map out a timeline? You know, can we go out and get someone to cut in the driveway? You know, can someone go out and get the permit from the, it'll be from the state highway department? I mean, to just keep moving along, where five years from now, everything just doesn't fall on as it wants. We have a plan on moving ahead.
And to start that, I would definitely look, probably one of my first steps would be looking for engineering, site plan, whatever, because again, I don't want to cut the driveway and then turn on that end of, we may actually build a driveway 100 feet one way or the other, you know, something like that, so definitely a site plan would be part of one of the first steps that we would be looking for.
Okay, so it sounds like we need a committee to investigate and recommend minimal development plan to meet the ISO standards and a timeline to which we can, we can fulfill the need to get something going up there. I know that Assistant Chief Matt Majestic, he'd love to be on that committee, and I know Bill Dunn has expressed a lot of interest since he got that land donated to us years ago, it was his retirement gift. And I know John Noel's a builder and a tanner and a planner, I would suggest that we set that committee up, work with possibly engineer Sharp who might be able to do a napkin drawing, and just let's get where we're at with the minimum requirement.
Sure.
And set a future plan up as to what we could do, when we get started, funding of it, contributions, we have a lot of companies and corporations in our community that have been most gracious. So I think if we assign three people to work on that, we could come up with a timeline and a minimum.
Perfect.
What are your thoughts, board members?
Oh, yeah, makes a lot of sense, and there's three people you mentioned, that makes sense, too.
Do we need a motion for a committee?
Probably.
Okay.
Who are the three members?
Jack, Bill?
I'm sorry, John Noel, Bill Dunn, and Assistant Chief Matt Majestic.
I'll make a motion to set up a township committee to review of the development plans for the 3.25 acre parcel, the Township owns in northern Oxford, and that committee consists of trustees Dunn, and trustee Bill Dunn, and trustee John Noel, and Assistant Chief Matt Majestic. Authorize them also to work with township engineer Sharp Engineering on a future possible development plan.
I'll second that. Okay, moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by trustee Charles. Any questions?
Yeah, the funding for the committee, township or fire?
Fire department, it's for fire property.
It's actually our property.
Fire department doesn't, I mean, it's in their name, the township owns all properties, even the park and rec properties.
Well, I would think since it's for the fire department, it would come from the fire department.
Well, I'm not disagreeing with you, sir.
Usually developments we've had them pay for, not their budget.
Well, I don't have a problem with that, you're saying.
Well, who wants to pay for?
Do you want to make a motion, Joe, to have the fire department pay for that?
I'll amend my motion to include that these funds start being extended to the fire fund.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have an amended motion by trustee Ferrari, and amended second by, I'm treasurer Ferrari, and amended second by trustee Charles. Roll. Yes, sir.
Okay, two motions, we'll vote on the amendment first, then the original motion. Okay, amendment is to have the funds being paid for the committee out of the fire fund. Okay, original motion is to have the trustee Dunn, trustee Noel, and Assistant Chief Majestic to the committee.
Okay, I'll call the bullpen.
Okay.
Vote on the amendment, board members. Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Dunn?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
No.
And trustee Charles?
Yes.
Okay, now we're going to vote on the original motion of appointing the committee members. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Dunn?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Thank you, board member.
Okay, Jim Sharp. Sharp Engineering report.
Good evening, board, just a couple of things to update you on, I'll start with a couple of the construction items, I like to do that at every meeting. If you haven't seen it already, the culvers is open and operational, so all that site work's been completed. The Westlake property that's up there, the 75, or I think 68, actually, residential homes, all the utilities are in, they're going to start, start all the roadwork here, probably in the next, if the rain ever stops, try to start that next week, and have everything in there paved by the end of the month. And then the Enclaves, which is another development over off of Market Street, same thing they're working on, all the utilities are in, and they're working on their roadway now, same type of timeframe, late July, early August. That is 15 duplex units over there right now. Let's see. Safety path, we do have safety path committee, safety path committee meeting tomorrow, so we're going to be talking about some items, we've got really three of them that are out there, we've got the Dunlap Road safety path, that we've been working on, and we've garnered our permit approvals for that. Ray Road and North Oxford Road up by the school, which is kind of an in-the-hustle, again, CJ was, got us some grant monies for that, but we don't have the construction funds yet. And Seymour Laker, which is kind of one of our top priorities, is continuing pushing that pathway out towards the Township Park. So again, we just, I know it's a committee meeting, but if anybody has any, you know, anything specific that they'd like to bring up, or things about the safety path in general, then I'll pass them along to Joe, and we can discuss them at tomorrow's meeting. And then lastly, last week, we had a meeting with the Row Commission on the Maloney Street Bridge, we are proceeding with the design work at this time, and my involvement is primarily just helping them out with some of the utilities, the sewers, and things that we have over there, it's really their design, and I'm kind of the voice for the township on that, I know John Noel has been involved, just kind of keeping his hands on things there, so I keep him in the loop as to what's going on, but again, if there's any comments or comments regarding that bridge that you'd like for me to pass along on your behalf, then at these meetings, I will certainly do so. And the manager's answering questions.
I do have a question for engineer Sharp.
Yes.
I was able to get the developer of that park over here, or the properties over here, to do the bulldozing of the berm and the cutting of the path base, and then all of a sudden, the developer came along and said, well, you know what, I'm going to pave that also. Did we ever get a written commitment or acknowledgement, he said he would base it and pave it for us in conjunction with his?
Which portion are you talking about?
From the current safety path up to the new street. Goes across golf course property.
They're going to do that as part of their project.
Right.
Yes.
They did commit to that.
Yes.
So we thank CGM Builders and Carl Winogon for that.
Correct.
Okay, good.
Yep. And we've got some pricing to talk about at tomorrow's committee meeting, and the rest of it, from Market Street down to West Bay Shore, we'll talk about that.
Super.
Okeydoke. Anything else?
Any questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Sharp. Item 12, unfinished business, we have none. Item 13, new business. Resolution for Rick Waver, Parks and Recreation Commission Chairman, is leaving the board? He's left the board. Curtis Wright, did you want to read that resolution? Curtis Wright, did you want to read that resolution and see if we can get it adapted, please?
Yes, I'll read the resolution.
Thank you.
This is an honor Rick Wager, who has served as a Parks and Recreation Commissioner for 24 years and a majority of that as a, as a chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission. The resolution reads, whereas Richard Wager was elected to the Oxford Township Parks and Recreation Commission in November 1988, and whereas Mr. Wager was re-elected to the Oxford Township Parks and Recreation Commission in 1992, 1996, 2000, 2004, and 2008, and whereas Mr. Wager served as chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission for 20 years of his 24-year tenure, and whereas Mr. Wager was honored with the local elected official of the year award by the Michigan Recreation and Park Association, and whereas, under Mr. Wager's leadership, Parks and Recreation Commission acquired and developed a 56-acre Powell Lake Township Park, a 300-acre Oakwood Lake Township Park, and we acquired 20-acre catch farm. And whereas, during Mr. Wager's tenure, numerous amenities were added to the parks as follows. One, Kids Kingdom Community Build Playground. Two, Red Flyer Community Sliding Hill. Three, the Disc Golf Course. Four, University League Accessible K.O.I Splash Pad. Five, six premier soccer fields. And six, the youth basketball activity court. And whereas, numerous park facilities, pavilions, and restrooms were constructed during Mr. Wager's service on the commission, and whereas countless programs, special events, camps, and athletic leagues were implemented under Mr. Wager's leadership, and whereas Mr. Wager has demonstrated a passion for the community and determination to enhance the quality of life for everyone who enters our parks or enrolls in our programs. Now therefore be a result that the Charter Township Box Report trustees wishes to thank Richard Wager for his 24 years of faithful service, dedication, commitment, and contributions to and for the community of Oxford. Oxford has been a better place because of Mr. Wager's vision, hard work, and passion.
I move to approve the resolution, honor of Richard Wager, his 24 years of service as Parks Recreation Commissioner as presented.
Second, I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari and second by trustee Nold. Roll call, please.
Uh, trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Dunn?
Yes.
Trustee Nold?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Court Wright, yes, and Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Okay, item 13B, Oxford Public Library Bond Proposal, resolution and ballot proposal. Ryan, did you want to come on up?
Good evening. I'm here this evening, I don't know if you want to be present or anything, but I do have a laptop and I've got files, but we'll start with this. I'm here this evening because my board last month adopted a resolution to place the ballot proposal for a bond to expand and renovate part of the Oxford Public Library back on the ballot this November. So you should have that resolution in your packet this evening. I just want to start by saying, again, because there's some new folks on this board, this process actually started roughly 11 years ago. In 2011, some of you were invited to the Oxford Public Library along with members of the community to sit down and strategize where the library was at that particular point in time, to assess its value to the community and to determine the needs, the future needs, that the community would be needing through library services into the future. Through that process, the strategic plan 2011 to 2016 came to life. The part, there were many components to that, but one of the components was future expansion to the library. That particular component, my board looked at a number, on a number of occasions during the process of executing that original plan, and had determined that until the current library facility was paid off, we were not really willing to entertain putting a proposal back on the ballot to expend more money from the taxpayers. So in 2016, the Oxford Public Library facility that we currently are housed in was paid off. At that point, we reevaluated the 2011 to 2015 plan. And one of the things that we had not completed, as noted, was the future expansion project. And so we, at that point in time, obtained the services of Seth Penchansky, one of the original leading architects that worked under David Millen, to design the original Oxford Public Library. We've also worked with Seth over the years in doing some minor renovations within the, within the current footprint of the existing building. Seth is now a principal at Daniels &amp; Zermatt Architects in Manharry. It was a logical process for us to obtain his services because he had the knowledge and the experience with a pre-state building. He had the CAD drawings that we needed in order to execute this plan, and he had the knowledge of our community as well. That brought us to a proposal that was brought to you, I don't know, about a year ago, that proposed to put this on the ballot during what we were not anticipating to be a global pandemic. During that point in time, that we had originally planned a series of meetings to share information with the community about this project, but obviously a pandemic was not allowing us to do that. So we took a lot of that process off the table, but at that point, we were unable to pull the ballot from, or the proposal from the ballot. We felt that it was in the hands of the community to decide if this was the time to do that. As you know, I'm sure you're aware, that proposal did fail by 47 votes. Forty-seven votes in the middle of a global pandemic. We did not look at that as being a referendum to never bring this back to the table. In fact, we heard from many people in the community that they would hope that we would reconsider that proposal and bring it back to the voters. That brought us to tonight. We have a proposal before you to be placed on the ballot in November of this year. I've taken some questions recently about why are you putting this on a ballot that is in an off-election year? That's a pretty simple question, or a pretty simple answer, and that is that this proposal, by all estimates that we've been given by the clerk, could cost about $16,000. Is that a correct assumption?
Fifty to $20,000.
Fifteen to $20,000.
Based on past elections, one special.
When you look at the record low interest rates on the bonds that are presented to us today, we'll probably never see those, that level of interest on a bond in many of our lifetimes. So at this point, we are looking at, we're hoping that you would consider placing this proposal on the ballot in November of this year. The library obviously will be paying for the ballot to be, the election to take place, but we thought that the price, the small price that we would be paying for that special election far outweighed the potential of several hundred thousand dollars in compounded interest over the term of the bonds in the future. So we're trying to be conscientious of the fact that we want to make sure that we're doing this in a responsible way and that we are trying to save our taxpayers as much money as we possibly can, yet execute the plan as originally presented. So at this point, if there are questions, I'm willing to entertain those.
Board members, I see Treasurer Ferrari has a question.
Ryan, you know our sample motion to assassinate those who'd love in 2022? Would you want it to love in next year or would it be in 2021?
Well, we have, we had your financial advising firm, PFM, we've worked with your attorneys at Miller Canfield, and they had indicated that there probably would be, not be enough time to sell the bonds in order to, to do construction. So what we were preparing to do is take out of our fund reserve the estimated $220,000, I think it is, to pay those interest payments in the first year. We're willing to do that.
Trustee Charles?
You mentioned one election, I was reading the paper, it said three elections.
This is, this is, this bond has only been brought to the voters one time.
Any other? Is this, is this the same package that was presented to the township last year?
This is the same package, I guess if you will, that was presented to the township board to go on the ballot last year, yes.
It seems to me, and I can't, don't know the date or the time, but I was part of a meeting that this was brought up and the, and the site plan was reviewed and there was tremendous concern about many variances that would have to take place with this site plan that you've got. And my concern is, is that we address those variances and things ahead of time and get this site plan out in the open so we can, preliminary site plan, so the, the board as well as the planning commission, if the zoning board appeals needs to be involved, all parties have a chance to look at it and weigh in on it before we proceed much further.
We've had this dialogue, but the meeting that you're talking about, I'm sorry, I just don't recall being at that meeting. You say I was at that meeting, but I don't remember being at that meeting. I do remember having that dialogue with the township board at one point in time, and I do remember having that dialogue with an architect. And I, if my recollection is correct, we have one spot on this plan that could be considered non-conforming, one, not multiple, one. Our architect in his CAD drawings have all of the property lines and the ordinances laid out. We know where those fall. We do know that we have an issue on the, let's see, would be the south side of the building where the community room expansion would take place. That property is quite non-conforming already because when you built the original building back in 96, we had to do a land swap with Parks and Recreation in order to fit the building on the property. That being said, all of the expansions to the back of the building to the west and all of the expansions to the north of the building, in between us and Oxford Community Schools, to our knowledge and our software, is conforming. We do know that the potential, or the proposed expansion to the side of the building, the community room expansion, would require us visiting for variance on that. That being said, during our last meeting, we made it very clear that should the voters support this bond proposal, we absolutely will have to come to all of the boards to get their approval on that. But we needed to find out if the community was even willing to support this proposal before we extend all of that money to do that. We felt that it was putting taxpayers' money, spending taxpayers' money in, in poor judgment by taking all of that into consideration before they've even approved the project.
Yes, sir. I would like to suggest that a preliminary site plan be approved by the PC board on this project.
We could do that, but we do not have the time to do that before this goes on the ballot. But we can start that process as soon as we approve this. We've always been willing to do that. And the property in question belongs to Oxford Township. And the property in question for the variance belongs to Oxford Township. That's why we felt we were putting the cart before the horse and taking this process through the way that you're suggesting.
Yes, sir, trustee Charles?
So I'm confused at this process that you're identifying because trustee Nold is saying we have a process in place for approval, but you haven't gone through that process. So it strikes me that you can't get an accurate dollar amount. You're saying you want to save money, but you might be costing money because we're, we're being asked to buy a payment of hope. We don't know about the approval. We don't know what this site is all about because you haven't taken the time to go to these boards.
Well, you know, people have changed. We've had dialogues between the folks that were on this board before, and there was not an issue with the process that we were proceeding with. Now we have new faces on this board and all of a sudden, those are changing. And I understand, but it's not fair to the library to have approved this once and now have all of these, where were these questions before? That's what I'd like to know. Why am I just learning about these questions now, tonight, when we're bringing this proposal to you?
I think that's a great question. Why are you just learning it? You should have learned it before.
Rod? I can answer that.
Where do I?
Because they got their packet on Friday, and they studied their packet over the weekend on Monday and Tuesday, and they have the questions on Wednesday, Ryan.
Yes, we never had these questions.
There's different people.
They were not here.
Different ordinances, different things have happened, so there are questions. Just get the questions out, you've got the answers. It sounds like we can run parallel paths. We can get this thing in front of the ZBA if there are zoning board appeals processes that need to run. We can see the board's playground, putting the bond on the election. If this board approves that, we can do that, you can continue working. What I hear these board members saying is, I don't want to see the site plan come in after a bond proposal is approved and awarded, and all of a sudden, boom, this is what we get. Let's work in parallel paths together and see if we can make it fit.
And to that supervisor, I will say, I have experience, it's not my first rodeo, as you know, sitting on planning commissions and zoning boards. I understand that process. And I'm really willing to do that, and so is our architect.
Very good. Thank you. Treasurer Ferrari?
We're talking about the variance that's needed, would still be on the library's property? Will they have to acquire a piece of township property?
That, that would be for our zoning administrator and engineer to review.
The only thing in question is setback. It's all on our property, sir. It's just setback. And it's one piece of the building that we're talking about.
Any more questions?
Any more? I, you got, hold on.
I've got a motion if there's no more.
I got a question down here. Yes, sir.
One question. So 47 votes at the previous election that was defeated, is that correct?
That's correct.
It seems to me that voters made a decision. I mean, just like the soccer game of the day, when anyone, they went to two, they didn't ask for the game to be played over again. I don't know why, it seems insulting to the taxpayers and the voters to keep asking to say anything over and over again, give $15,000 or $20,000.
During a global pandemic, we lost by 47 votes.
Okay, so any more questions?
That's your opinion, Mr. Charles?
Any more questions? Trustee Dunn, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion, if they don't meet the requirements, it's not going to go forward. That's all they do, because we've got ordinances in place, if they follow the ordinances, they go to the ZBA and they give you a break. I'm going to move to approve the resolution requesting township to submit library bond proposal as presented and to approve the following way, that we placed on the November 2nd, 2021 special election ballot. Wordage is library extension and renovation proposal, shall the township advise with county of open Michigan borrow the sun not to exceed $9,100,000, and issue general obligation unlimited tax bonds payable in not to exceed 20 years in the date of issues for the purpose of paying the cost of renovating, constructing, in addition to furnishing and equipping the township existing Oxford Public Library facility, including but not limited to the following. Goal point, expanding youth services department to include the additional forest spaces for its collections, early literacy and special needs resources and additional, additional furnishings, expanding the adult service department to include additional study rooms and conference rooms, a local history and genealogy, and relocation of the adult computer lab, expanding the community room, renovating existing space to include a maker space for lifelong. renovating existing space to include maker space for lifelong learning, upgrading the HBAC infrastructure to include energy efficient rooftop units, boilers, and automated controls and, uh, related site improvements. The estimated millage to be levied is in two thousand twenty-two is zero point five five mil, zero point five five mil per one thousand taxable value. And the estimated simple, simple average, I have to see my eye doctor here, annual millage rate required to retire the bonds is zero point four eight mil, which is zero point four eight per one thousand taxable value.
I was seconded. Okay, it's moved by trustee Dunn, seconded by treasurer Ferrari. Are there any questions? Trustee Noel.
Can he clarify his first two sentences?
I didn't click. I'm sorry, sir.
Uh, clarify which two?
The first two sentences?
The bullet points?
Yes.
No.
The very first.
I move to approve the resolution requesting the township to submit library bond proposal as presented and approved the following language. We place them in November second of two thousand twenty-one special election ballot.
Is there anything there about the, going before the boards, the PC or anything? Let me ask this direction. Was that a comment or part of the motion I'm taking into the planning commission as a parallel path?
I didn't mention that in my motion. I think, I think it's, it's going to be, anybody that's going to build anything in Oxford Township is going to have to go to the planning commission. They're going to have to meet local ordinances. Uh, and if they don't, they're going to have to, they're going to have to do the same thing as everybody else does.
Thank you.
If they don't want to do it, it doesn't go forward.
Absolutely, we'll do that.
Any other questions? Just trustee Charles, motion to comments. Questions?
Well, I just, well, Bill answered the question. I just don't understand how we can change this procedure, but that's more of a comment than a question.
Treasurer Ferrari, you chair the township's adopted qualifying statement and submit it to the state to allow us to levy bonds. That's condemned issue.
Okay. Any other questions?
Roll call. Trustee Noel, no. Trustee Charles?
No.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Dunn?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Court right, yes. Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Item thirteen C, Manito Hills, final site plan. Uh, board members, are there, you read it in your package. Are there any questions? Do we want to have any questions for the developer or questions for meeting board? Call.
I'm going to read them.
Looking at the plan, it's hard to read these numbers. Is it buildable on lots six and seven with that pond in the back? Are those actual lots?
Uh, that would be a question for, uh, why don't you come on up and check. Treasurer Ferrari, please.
I think those are the right ones. It's hard to read. Good evening. Jerry Griffin. Pretty homes. Six and seven here.
Yeah, can you, can you build in those areas?
Yes, yeah. Those lots are, are actually gigantic. Um, trying to find the dimensions on here.
Oh, is that a wetland?
It's an existing pond. Yeah, I can use my glasses. Sorry. For example, lot seven looks like, if I'm reading it correctly, two hundred and thirty feet deep. So, yeah, there, there's plenty of envelope to fit a home that we can play in, I guess.
How about a driveway?
And, and. No variance.
Any other questions?
Ask you no variance.
Does it call? Clear. All right, I look for a motion.
I move to approve the final site plan for Manito Hills, approximately located South of the road, west of the pier road, front of Manito Lake, section thirty-four, Oxford Township. I define this parcel number oh-four, thirty-four, four-two-six, zero-zero-seven. Subject and condition listed below A. Approve the sanitary sewer water system by local commission of the county, Michigan Department of Water Management, Great Lakes Energy, and Open County Water Resources Commission. Approve the condominium documents by township attorney, township engineer, township planner. The applicant shall participate in a preconstruction conference. The applicant shall provide approval of recording of approved condominium documents. Local business can be issued for any clearing of construction work. The applicant shall utilize hundreds of drain a road, block construction traffic, posted construction traffic route signs that drain a road into the park.
I think that's a good motion, very tight.
Support. Okay, it's moved by treasurer Ferrari, seconded by trustee Dunn. A roll call, please.
Court right, yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Dunn?
Yes.
Moving on. Recreational marijuana, item thirteen D. I'll take this one. Uh, board members, Oxford Township adopted ordinance one thirty-two that prohibits marijuana establishments within the boundaries of the charter township of Oxford. We've had more than several individuals and businesses expressing interest in locating marijuana establishments in Oxford Township. Up for discussion is consideration to repeal or amend ordinance one thirty-two and replace it with a new ordinance that would regulate recreational marijuana. In talking with attorney Rentrup today, Hans Rentrup, uh, the attorney wrote this up for me to discussion and points. In two thousand eighteen, the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, commonly known as the Recreational Act, was approved. Recreational Act permits medic, marijuana establishments, which are defined to include marijuana, growers, safety compliance facilities, processors, microbusinesses, retailers, secure transporters, or any other type of marijuana-related businesses licensed by the Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory, Regulatory Affairs. However, the Recreational Act allowed municipalities to completely prohibit or limit the number of marijuana establishments within its boundaries. The township has prohibited marijuana establishments by adopting ordinance number one thirty-two, now section thirty-nine of the Township Code of Ordinance. Pursuant to that ordinance, all marijuana establishments are prohibited within the boundaries of Oxford Township. While some residents and property owners have asked for medical marijuana, or for medic, for marijuana establishments to be allowed in the township, uh, this would require the township to rescind or amend ordinance one thirty-two. Are there any questions? Okay, I'll make a motion to direct the township attorney to prepare an amendment to ordinance number one thirty-two. This amendment will be written with the township board or an appointed committee of the township board. Recommendations to the number of and type of establishments to be considered. An amendment to the code of ordinance would be prepared and first introduced and then adopted by the township board for inclusion of these recommended marijuana establishments in the charter township of Oxford. Now, second. Moved by supervisor Curtis, seconded by trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Yes, sir, treasurer Ferrari.
I have questions. I have comments.
I understand. I understand the logic behind all this, that with marijuana facilities, that it
could possibly be additional funding, and if you don't regulate them, they're going to come anyway. As far as additional funding, we added a half a million dollars to our fund balance for twenty-twenty, so extra funding is really a non-issue. As far as regulation, that's never been done in the history of mankind. The underground market will, will not all of a sudden disappear. These actors won't all of a sudden abide by the new ordinance, no different than prohibition or gun control. We can pass as many ordinance as we want for marijuana facilities that will not impact the black market at all. It becomes economics. The underground market will just lower the prices because shoppers will purchase it. Let's go to the underground market. They won't go to our dispensaries. To me, if you want this, it becomes an issue that you feel is good for Oxford Township, not because of the false arguments of regulation, earning more money. This is one of, one of those issues that I feel strongly that just because we can, doesn't mean we should.
Thank you, treasurer Ferrari. Any other board questions? Okay.
Well, one minute of comment here. My understanding is that municipality would gather most around twenty-seven thousand dollars a year.
In what? In what?
From operating the store, store for recreation, which seems to be small potatoes.
Okay. All right, how call the roll.
Trustee Charles?
No.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Dunn?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
No.
Court right, no. Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes for three.
Okay, item thirteen E, American Rescue Plan, Use of Funds Committee. Uh, I'm going to review some things here tonight and then let you know where we're at. First off, uh, on Monday, Joe came in my office, the last Monday, and sat down at my desk. We're going to get two million dollars. Find it. Okay. It took us until today, and successfully we submitted our first application for the American Rescue Plan monies of about one million dollars. So after we go through the approval process, we will look at that monies. Secondly, what I've asked you all to do as board members was under each of the four separate, separate allowable use of the funds to come up with a list of American Rescue Plan monies to be spent on items. Those can include make necessary investments in water, sewer, broadband, inter, infrastructure, or provision. Wow, Bill, I got to say. For provision of government services to extend of the reduction in revenue due to pandemic relative to revenues collected in the most recent year, uh, in premium pay for eligible employees, workers providing up to thirteen dollars per hour, and to respond to the pandemic or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits, and aid impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hotel. Our plan came up with approximately thirty ideas, and in our meeting, two meetings ago, it was submitted that, uh, while we all garnered these very close, dear and dear, uh, categories that should these funds be applied to, we all agreed that we would form a committee to make a recommendation to the township board on how to spend these funds and recommend on how to spend these funds, so that the full board could then have a vote on it. So I put together all that in a motion, and I move to appoint trustee Bill Dunn, clerk Curtis Wright, and trustee Marjorie Payne to a committee to review the list of potential uses of the American Rescue Plan Act funds to receive by the charter township of Oxford and to provide their recommendations at the August eleventh, twenty twenty-one township board meeting for consideration approval. Second. Moved by supervisor Curtis, seconded by trustee Noel. Roll call, please.
Uh, just a comment.
Yes, sir. Any questions?
Did, did, uh, all board members have been submitting some ideas to me?
I have a grand sum total, but I don't know whose name is next to it.
Just curious.
I did a few.
I did a few. Joe did a few, but those are the only things I know. We have a few that's not, yes, sir.
I think it counts the folks that you want to be on the committee. I feel that should be the full time elected officials.
No.
Just because of availability.
We'll see if they agree with you, Joe.
I think she does.
Nope. All right, how call the roll.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Dunn?
No.
Treasurer Ferrari?
No.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Court right, yes. Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Okay, board members, uh, item thirteen F, TNT cleaning called approximately thirty days ago and gave notice. They're retiring. Uh, and since we had a board meeting, they elected to retire. So what I did and the administrative assistant did was we went out and, uh, broadcast the fact that we needed cleaning service and provide us, uh, we had a list of things that we needed to be cleaned and, uh, like, for example, the offices upstairs are two days a week, Wednesday night and Sunday night, and the sheriff's department downstairs is one day during the week. Uh, as you can see, I've had eight people provide a quote, I'm sorry, eight people asked for quotes, four people provided quotes, and our, our M L Services, who are here tonight, uh, came in at a low bidder of nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents monthly for both offices. Robin, you want to come up and see if we have any questions for you? I know I have a couple.
Yes.
Robin, say your last name.
Uh, Robert May, Emmy White, and I.
Okay, every time I look at it, I have, wow, what is that? Okay, um, does anybody have any questions for Robin? Yes, Joe.
We have a sprayer. We spray our offices like once a week?
Yes.
Just for the COVID stuff and all that? Would that be something you'd be willing to do as well?
For sure, yes.
Okay.
Uh, didn't you say you had one or something?
Uh, I don't think we have one at the moment.
Just that good money, Jack, and I'd rather use it.
Yeah.
Uh, what I will need is a photocopy of the IDs of people cleaning, so that Sergeant Lins, who, who you met, and your partner there, Aaron?
Jason.
Jason, yeah, okay. Okay. Photocopies IDs so they can do some searching?
Okay.
And a copy of your insurance forms.
Okay.
Okay, um, I need a motion to accept them.
I move to approve a quote from RML Services LLC to provide janitorial cleaning services for the Oxford Township offices, local county share of substation offices at a price of nine eighty-seven twenty-five per month. Further, RML Services LLC can provide a current certificate of insurance that includes the charter township of Oxford, additional insurer. Supervisor Jack Curtis is authorized to sign any required documents on behalf of the charter township of Oxford.
Now, second. Moved by treasurer Ferrari, seconded by trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Yes, there is. Right here's one. Yeah, is, do you have a, a formal agreement that supervisor Curtis signed?
Uh, we can provide one, yes. We haven't provided one.
This is what we have on the record.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, sir, trustee Dunn.
Normally we have dates in there. Uh, could it be through twenty twenty-two or it's just going to be forever?
I'll keep open. That is, aren't you doing a good job?
You know, TNT didn't have a closed date on it. They just called up and said, we're done.
Okay.
And treasurer Ferrari, as long as you guys are doing a good job, uh, and we'll discuss as we go along.
Okay.
Any questions? Roll call.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Dunn?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Court right, yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Item thirteen F, that's done. That's why I flipped it over. Thirteen G, resignation and authorization to fill a vacancy. Um, our administrative assistant has elected to resign from the position she was hired for. Melissa will be moving on. She's accepted a job in, uh, LaPierre Schools, and, uh, I'm asking for authorization to accept her resignation and authorization to fill her vacancy, but right now we are using, utilizing, uh, Mannan McCullough to temporarily fill the position. Mannan is very familiar with the building department, the clerk department, and the treasury department. Just this week, she's helped in the treasury department and the clerk's department, and she helped me unravel this ARP funding request. Uh, I would, I'm going to work Mannion, if approved, Man, Mano, for, uh, thirty hours per week temporarily at the rate of sixteen dollars and twenty cents per hour. Need a motion?
Yes. I'll move to accept the resignation of Melissa Prowdy, administrative assistant to the supervisor effect of July sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Further, supervisor Jack Curtis is authorized to see and interview candidates and fill the vacant administrative assistant to the supervisor position. The selected candidate will be offered a starting wage between. The selected candidate will be offered a starting wage between grade three step three up to grade three step six, depending on experience and qualifications, and to include benefits afforded to other full-time Oxford Township employees.
I'll second that. Moved by Clerk Wright, seconded by Treasurer Ferrari. Now, are there any questions? Seeing none? All those in favor, signify, oh, wait, I got to call a roll, there's money in there.
Yep.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Dunn?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
And Trustee Charles?
Yep.
I can finally get off the hook here, Joe. Item thirteen D, summer and winter taxes, late payment penalty.
And board members, I was looking through something just through past minutes. Back in ninety-three, when we did the motion to collect the three percent penalty, we put it on just winter taxes and not summer and winter, as we have been doing. So this is just kind of a bookkeeping issue and a clerical issue. I make a motion of the Oxford Township Board Trustees to recite its motion of February tenth, nineteen ninety-three, authorize a charge to collect the three percent penalty on both summer and winter taxes, and have paid by February fourteenth in perpetuity.
Now, second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none? Roll call. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. And Trustee Dunn?
Yes.
Okay, item fourteen, items removed from the consent agenda, we had none. Item fifteen, we get a chance to have the public comment again. Are there any comments from the public?
I have one I'd like to address the board.
Oh, okay, well, come on up. Identify your name and address, please.
My name is Tom Hoover. I live at twenty-three thirty-five Shaky Lane in Oxford. I just wanted to express my disappointment that the board approved the special election to the library without making them conform to all the requirements before they were approved among us. That's all I have to say, I'm just kind of disappointed in that. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Does a hand up right there?
I'm Kathy Hayfline, I live at nine Wheyer in the village of Oxford. And I'm sure this has been addressed before, but people like my age, I can't hear you people. If you all have microphones, why don't we use them? Some people are short, or their signs are in front of their mouths, so you can't read their lips, and a lot of times, you guys just talk amongst yourselves instead of projecting to us. If I was sitting in the back, I wouldn't have understood anything. Just a thought.
Sorry, Kathy, we'll look into this. Is this better if somebody talked this close?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, understood.
If I get my chair fixed, I would be tall.
I got a telephone. Yes, ma'am, come on up and identify yourself.
I live at one five seven, one down, both courts. And I just wanted to understand with the recreational marijuana, if you make a decision to allow dispensaries, does the community have any input into that?
Yes.
And how will that happen?
At the township board meeting.
Okay. Well, I just want to express a concern, because if you go up to LaPierre, and you drive through LaPierre, and you see it's kind of a hedge shop on every corner, it would be very sad for that to happen, cannot search.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Ron Pullman, fifteen ninety-one Dakota Court. I'm kind of disappointed that there were no public comments that we could make on the approval of final site plan for the Manitou Hills subdivision. One of the things that was brought up, I don't know if the guys are still here from Clearview, that on pages seven and two of their site survey, that pond, I think it was Treasurer Ferrari talked about, site six and seven, that's retention pond, sort of says on the plan. So they're going to dig it out, and it's going to be retaining water. So I don't know what they're talking about, but how they can build homes there. Are they here?
No. They're off.
Oh, really, that's interesting. In any case, so I think maybe somebody should reconsider what's going on with those two lots. And of course, my other public comments were about the development entirely. I think there's a bunch of problems with that site, with the environmental plan that they have. That whole property is from north to south, slopes downward. So the water's going to run downward, and that retention pond on the north side of the clock, doesn't make sense to me. You think you want that retention pond on the south side to collect water? Of course, it runs into the wetland that's right behind that property, and then into Manitou Lake. So you guys have approved this, and you had the motion all written up and ready to go, which is what they did in the planning commission a month ago. They had that five-page motion written up, they didn't really care what we said about that property, what they're going to develop. And I think you guys are in the same boat. I think that must be that you really have no choice but to approve those types of developments. But I really appreciate, I would appreciate more public comment on those types of developments.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comments? Ryan?
I just want to share with you, I happen to live in the community that this nice young lady was talking about in the back of the room. And she's exactly right, that city has turned into a mess, and a lot of it is around recreational marijuana facilities. I will tell you that one of the things that they've done wrong is they didn't plan well. In fact, they really, in my opinion, didn't plan. And as a result of that, we have dispensaries and grow facilities popping up everywhere, seemingly. Keep in mind, as you go through this process, and I know I'm not telling you anything you don't already know, but I just want to remind you that if you're going to move forward with something of that nature, keep in mind that it does or could have a potential impact on the property values of your homes in this community. I also want to remind you that those homes are your bread and butter. Keep that in mind.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
I just want to echo Audrey Righero, one-six-four-three, precourt. I live in Lakes and Indian Wood. Very disappointed, too, that no public comment was allowed before you voted that motion to approve Manitou. Echo Mr. Pullman's comments. The planning commission handled it similarly, so very disappointed. Question about the library bond proposal. Will they have their approval for their site plan before it goes to the ballot?
We're taking public comments now, we'll try to address them later, we can answer questions now, otherwise it would be on the agenda.
No questions again. Lovely. I say that because as a taxpayer, I'm not sure I appreciate the fact that you've just approved an expenditure on a bond proposal, understanding they're paying for a special election, and they don't even have an approved site plan. Thank you, Mr. Charles and Mr. Noel, for recognizing that.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the board of trustees' comments. Trustee Noel? I'm encouraged to have Mr. Sharp talk about the Seymour Lake Park Safety Path that's come up in many conversations of the residents. When are we going to get that done? When are we going to be able to go down to it safely and actually use the park? So I'll take that note, and I'll work on that, that's very good. And we can't seem to get rid of the construction areas in the township. I look forward to that day when things are trimmed down a bit. Thank you. Okay, Clerk Wright?
Yeah, a couple of things, not that we approve the language for the election. Excuse me. Not only have approved the language for the election for November, for the library, we'll start the process of getting the ballots once we get those. Those won't begin until probably late September, somewhere in that range, for the absentee ballots. So we'll get that going. Letters of law requesting use of the facilities for people who want to vote in person. So that process is coming. Susan McKellar will definitely assist me tremendously in keeping that process going. The other items I want to address is the recreational marijuana. That's a decision of this board. Hopefully, the people that do come in the community, or those that are here, will be good citizens back to the community for that, and make sure that things are done the right way. On the applicants, and the establishments parts, and also on our parts of township. The other item I want to address is the issue about our meetings. The meetings are, meetings of the township board, the public is invited to attend, and it's a discussion of the chair to recognize people to speak on agenda items. You are given a chance to speak on items not on the agenda and on the agenda, but as a public comment portion, as Supervisor Curtis indicated, that's something that you give us comments, and you can respond at a later time, and this is somewhat of what I'm doing now, in my turn to speak as a board member. So that's pretty much all I need to say right now for the night, but that's it.
Trustee Charles?
Well, first thing is, just a quick note about the Downtown Development Authority, which I'm a member of, and I've been there for a few years. A great event this past week, we had the most people I've ever seen at a Thursday, conscious in the park, was Family Night. And I think it was something I'd like to see. Previous events, it was sparsely attended. For whatever reason, this was a phenomenal success, like, that was nice to see. Secondly, going back to what the young lady said about the library proposal. When I got on this board, I was told we have protocols and procedures we should follow. I remember the second meeting I was at, the supervisor mentioned that as an agenda item, and that's kind of disturbing that all of a sudden, you don't have procedures that we can approve upon without going through the procedures. So, that's it.
Trustee Payne?
Nothing.
Nothing, you're done. Treasurer Ferrari?
Very disappointed that we will consider recreational marijuana. I think it's bad for Oxford, and I think it's bad for our community, and bad for our property values. As far as recreational marijuana, the devil will be in the details. We can make any language clear, concise, and easy to understand. That's all I have.
Thank you. I have several comments. One, congrats to the previous board on a great audit. The ones that presented the two thousand and twenty audit, financially wonderful. Number two, the website is being rebuilt by the career technical education students at the high school, was presented today for us to review it, look at it, make any improvements or changes. Along with I T concerns, we had a report on our server. Accessing our server was being done to several restricted sites. We've made note of that within the confines of the employees in the township. But if anybody comes in here with a phone and hits our internet Wi-Fi and goes to a restricted site, we can find out who that is and eliminate the employees. There are many avenues that it can happen, but we've noticed it, and we've got to be careful of it, because in other townships, it's taken down the websites, or taken down the whole server. We've met with Stephanie Potter, she is the new Oakland County Economic Development Director. She takes over for Dan Hunter and part of Brad Hanson's work. She's going to be working closely with us. The A E D, the defibrillator batteries in all of our township office and the sergeant's vehicle, the batteries have expired, they are on back order. And Bill, a note, we had an S S O, which is a sanitary sewer overflow on M twenty-four at East Market Street. The cause is under investigation for the grease blockage, but we found that the sewer under twenty-four is in need of repair. Third and final thing, the planning commission has our engineer. The planning commission has our zoning official. The planning commission does by state law review all ordinances, all impact on any development in our community. Our engineer is certified and gives us the information that qualifies developments for use. None of us up here are engineers. So to answer an engineering question, that's all done in the planning commission. So that's why we don't attempt to answer engineering questions at the township board. And according to M C L, I don't have the number, this doesn't even have to come to the township board for approval. So that's why no questions were addressed at this time. And that would be the end of my comments.
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second. Moved by Trustee Dunn, seconded by Treasurer Ferrari. All those in favor, signify by saying hi. Hi. Those opposed, hearing done, meetings closed.